Here we go. Going to ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
We'll take a moment of silence for our first responders, fire, police, and the events.
Thank you, everybody. You can see. And thank you for coming out to the East Goshen Township Supervisor Board of Supervisor meeting. And it is September the 6th, so welcome, everybody. Reminder that this is going to be a Zoom hybrid meeting. And we are being recorded via Zoom. The recording will be uploaded later to the township's YouTube channel for viewing. Under the chairman's report, the board met in an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss personnel matters. And because of Labor Day, there will be no yard waste pickup on Wednesday, tomorrow, September the 7th. And another reminder is that the township yard sale is Saturday, September the 17th, so please make sure you sign up this week if you can. And there are no public hearings. Under the emergency services report, we have none this evening. We have no financial report and we do have the approval of the minutes and treasurer's report. So the minutes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve both the August 2nd and August 16th meeting minutes.
Second motion.
Thank you. And were there any corrections that any of you saw that were required? Chris, I think you do a good, great job at these minutes, so thank you for that. Are there any questions regarding the approval of the minutes in the room or in the Zoom room? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question to approve the minutes. I thank you, and there are no nays. Just a, just a moment to let you know that Mike Lynch is not joining us this evening. He is fine. He is just taking a step away. Under treasurer's report, we have the treasurer's report. Dave, do you want to fill us in on that?
Certainly, thank you, Madam Chair. Attached is our treasurer's report for the weeks, August 11th, 2022 through September 1st, 2022. General fund revenue over this period was driven by tax receipts, Q2 revenue, Q2 Verizon franchise fees, parks and recreation fees, and building permit fees. Expenses for this period were legal expenses, including 56K for the Hicks family settlement. We go debt payments, equipment rental, engineering services, HR services, automotive maintenance, pension contribution, and ongoing operating expenses. I also want to point out that our Portnoy collections amount paid to the township as well as collected by Portnoy has now reached almost $41,000, which is a 28% collection of our total that we've sent to Portnoy, which is $144,000. So, and since June, we've seen a 63% collection rate decrease.
That's great.
Madam Chair, I'll move to accept the receipts and approve the expenditures as presented in the expenditure registry register and
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Cody. And regarding the bills. Does anybody have any questions? I'm just checking to see if I have any notes. I don't think that I made any notes though. I didn't. So I don't have any questions regarding the bills. Gentlemen, on the board. Are there any questions regarding the bills in the room or in the Zoom room? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. Those who want to pay the bills? I thank you. And moving right on to old business. So, under old business, we have the appointment of the vacancy board chair. Derek, you want to do that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As everybody knows, Tom Clapper resigned both his positions of vacancy board chair and auditor back in August 2nd. He is, he moved out of the township. We did appoint the auditor already, and that would be Peter Riley to finish up Tom's term, but we had yet to appoint a vacancy chair. After speaking with majority of board members, it looks like Daniel Light, who is also a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission, was the choice for the next vacancy board chair. So I have a motion on the table to appoint Mr. Light as vacancy board chair for the remainder of the current term, which is a year-to-year term.
Madam Chair, make motion. We point Daniel Light to the position of vacancy board chair through the remainder of the current term.
Thank you. Thank you, Cody. So that you all are aware what the vacancy chair does in the event one of the supervisors were to resign from their term, then the board would then try to come to an agreement as to who would replace that person. In the event there was a two-to-two tie, the vacancy board chairman or woman would come in and they would look at the candidates and then be able to cast that final vote. For the record, the vacancy chair board is made of one person because it is truly just a tiebreaker vote. And that person is legally allowed to vote for themselves. Danny Light is, has, has, he has an idea of what it takes to be on a board with our township. As he is on Park and Rack, he's the, the chair of the, he was the chair of the Park and Rack. I'm not sure if that's still his current position, but.
He's also on the Friends.
And Friends of East Goshen as well. So so I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood what that vacancy chair person does. So are there any questions regarding the motion that's on the table for the board members here? Or in the room or in the Zoom room? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. Those in favor of appointing Daniel Light to our vacancy chair board? I thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Under new business, as is my prerogative, I can switch things up. And I'm going to ask that we change from A to B for the first item. So the environmental sustainability advisory committee's request for social media pages. Christie, since you're here, do you want to come up and explain to us about that? Or Derek, do you want to? Great. Perfect. Thanks for coming tonight.
Good evening, supervisors, staff members, and East Goshen residents here and, and some guests we have with us too for our second presentation. So we're thrilled to be up and running as your newly created Environmental and Sustainability Advisory Council. One of the recommendations that the authorizing agency for Pennsylvania overseeing EACs that's We Can Serve PA recommends that each AC establish their own their own accounts, media accounts. So we did include that in the ordinance proposal and you have approved that. We're not requesting a separate website. That involves fairly extensive maintenance, professional assistance, and some expense. We are simply requesting a separate Facebook and Instagram account. These are free and simple to maintain. Quite a few local EACs do have their own accounts. We have some samples of content to show you. And Jason and David as our board contact and any other official you designate would have full oversight over our postings. Mary McCloskey and Mary Kruger, who are here now, along with Alice Lenty, who cannot be with us tonight, have volunteered to serve on, as our media committee. And our two Marys will continue with this presentation. And then we have some very quick handouts just to show you.
Do you have it written out? Okay.
Good evening.
Hi, thanks for coming.
Thanks. Our pleasure. We will function completely apolitically.
Oh, excuse me. Can you please state your name for the record?
Sure. Mary McCloskey. Do you need my address?
No. Just your street.
Clock Tower Drive.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry.
Oh, no problem. So, as Christie said, we will function completely apolitically and concentrate on local examples and community involvement. We hope to engage residents across the full spectrum, including apartment dwellers, students, homeowners, senior citizens, children, and young adults.
So, we're just gonna, we have a couple examples if you want to see it, you know, in order to keep it simple. There would be, you know, we would cover topics such as solar panels, EV chargers, recycling. We would, we would remind people that there's a hazardous waste event collection that the Chester County Solid Waste is doing in another couple of weeks. There's information like that would be what we would do on a, on a Facebook and Instagram account. You know, so we would, we would not, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be trying to stir controversy or even really you know, and you know, we would stick to factual, informative posts.
And also the types of things that we'll be presenting on a Facebook page or Instagram will all be combined in a shared. What is it? The?
A Google Doc. Google Drive kind of thing.
That we are happy to share with the board and, and so that we have collaboration and oversight. So we already have a standing collection of items that
You know, we see something. Yeah, we see something we posted in there like, oh, this is cool. And we have a lot of ideas on trying to, you know, be local, be, be global, like kind of trying to mix it up a little bit. And we're really going to try and reach people that we haven't reached yet by, you know.
And understanding that we are speaking for the township. So we would want your input so we can flag anything that you think might not be appropriate before it's ever posted. And you can share administrators on a page.
Okay. So the, so then Jason would be overseeing all the postings though? Is that correct? Okay. All right.
Yeah, from, from my perspective, you know, it's a stated objective of the ESAC to communicate with the community and, you know, Facebook and Instagram are channels of communication. So I, I just think you're yeah, it's, it's meeting an obligation that's, that's basically part of your mission. So you know, and with the staff oversight and, you know, I'll be liaison as the board. I, I really don't see any issues. So thank you.
Okay.
And I like it too. Even though I'm the, I'm I'm the conservative here, but I, I do all of this stuff.
Madam Chair, I'd like to off, I'd like to move to authorize the ESAC to create Facebook and Instagram accounts.
Okay, thank you. Does the board have any other questions of any of these fine individual volunteers we have? Are there any questions regarding this motion in the room or in the Zoom room? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. Those in favor of allowing the ESAC to have their Facebook and Instagram pages? I thank you very much. We appreciate your, we appreciate your enthusiasm. That's great. Thank you. All right. And then moving along. Somebody else we know very well. So Brian, do you want to come on up and give us a, an idea of what's going on here with the Westchester Clean Energy Group?
Good evening, everybody. I think you know me, but for the record, Brian Hutchinson, Cooper Circle. Obviously, East Goshen. Thank you very much for allowing us to present the presentation tonight. It's up on the, on the, on the boards here. Before we get started, I just want to note that we have in the audience two other members of the Westchester Clean Energy Future. Jim Wiley, who serves as our chairman, who is on the Westchester. Is it an ESAC or SAC?
Can you just speak a little bit louder to the mic? Sorry, it's not that great of a mic.
I'm a tall guy.
Thank you.
Cody, Cody, understand. And Henry Alexander, who is also in, on, on our committee as well. He represents West Goshen. Again, as I said, my name is Brian Hutchinson. And I'm a member of the Westchester Area Clean Energy Future Steering Committee, which I am the representative from East Goshen on, on this committee. The East Goshen Board has already been provided with the full PDF presentation and the narrative. So Christie and I will be going over the slides briefly. If you'd like additional information, please see the PDF. The slides and the narrative are what was represented to the Westchester Council of Governments in July by Jim Wiley and myself as the yearly report. Christie and I will be focusing on more of how this report relates to what Westchester Clean Energy Future has done and its significance to East Goshen. So could we go to the second slide, please? So here are the topics that are being covered today. We will be covering the status of the community engagement, which is the Clean Energy Future Committee. The status of municipal actions, the status of community-wide progress, the challenges we face, the suggestions from elected officials, and suggestions for how elected officials can help. Slide three, please. There are 24 slides. So I've timed this. If I don't get any interruptions, it'll be six minutes.
Okay, go.
Six minutes for the 10, the first 10 slides. So the, this slide details the two major parts of the energy transition strategy as laid out in the cabinet study. Municipal facing and community facing. I and the rest of the members of the steering committee from other EACs and SACS have been working on the community-facing part. Developing easily accessible resources and a strategy to get them in front of key stakeholders. Slide four, please. This slide is an update on what the CEF team has done since we were formed in early 2020. And I'm going to just refer to my screen down here so I can see it easily. So since 2020, the CEF team has held two public meetings, the introduction and residential modules. If you recall, the introductory module was sponsored and, and done and performed by the East Goshen here in, under, under East Goshen. We developed the Westchester Area Clean Energy Future.org website with resources specific for residential, big business, small business, education, and nonprofits. We've grown a followers contact list of about 500, hosted two surveys, EVs and solar, posted 13 articles on the CEF blog, hosted a table at community day events in all six municipalities, including here at the East Goshen Township Sustainability Expo back in April. We've spoken with the Westchester Rotary, the CCATO, the Chesko Environmental Allianz, excuse me. And we've attempted outreach to homeowner associations in the Westchester area without much success. We've established partnerships. Oh, excuse me. Next slide. We've established partnerships with PICO Home Energy Assessment Team, the Chester County Planning Commission, EAB Sustainability Director, Solarize Greater Westchester, which is a neighbor helping neighbor, volunteer, all volunteer organization. And all of the SACS, the EACs, the PSC, the PSC is the Public Services Committee in West Whiteland. The small tag in a square in the bottom right-hand corner is the handout that we give at our, our events. Next slide, please. The centerpiece of the Westchester Area Clean Energy Future is the website. Our mission is reduce, electrify, and transition. I encourage you to spend some time on the website as the team has put a lot of work into many resources and examples of how the community can work toward our overall goals. Slide seven. Slide seven shows how the team is using surveys to engage with the public. We've completed two so far, EVs and solar. Lots of great information and data here on what we found. The survey, you will note that almost 60% who answered the survey indicated that their next vehicle purchase would be an EV of some sort. Slide eight. This slide shows how the team create a frequent FAQ page, given the many questions that arose from the survey. I believe that we had over 50, 50 questions from that particular survey. So we followed up and tried to answer almost all of them. Slide nine, please. So this slide shows how the team is creating, oh, excuse me, slide nine. The slide nine shows the partnerships we've created during the, the past two years. PICO Home Energy Assessment Team has been very helpful. The Chester County Planning Commission has been very supportive, and Rachel Griffith, the new Sustainability Director, has been learning about our resources. Solarize Greater Philadelphia, again, Volunteer Neighbor Helping Neighbor Group is assisting residents with questions about solar. But our first task is to provide education on how to reduce electrify and then talk to them about solar and other renewable energy options and transitions. Slide 10, please. So let's now switch from community facing to municipal actions. As the slide reads, the study by the cabinets, by cabinets was accepted by all six townships in the spring of 2020 that accomplished three things. One, it accepted the cabinet study. Two, it created the Community Engagement Task Force, which is now the Westchester Area Clean Energy Future. Participate in exploring and aggregated procurement of renewable electricity for the six township operations. That's the third one. So while there were 17 strategies that cabinets recommended, the above three were the only ones collectively approved to move forward. The third strategy slash project is on hold with no plans to move forward. I will turn the slides over to Christie since she will be going over the next 10 slides or so.
So moving right along, slide 11, please. All right. So we don't see the whole thing up on the screen. There are three categories there. Who's? There we go. There you go. Thank you. So everything highlighted in yellow or the tan is really supposed to be yellow. Our items that have already begun are in progress. So no, don't go on yet, please.
I did not try to do that. I just.
That's okay. I just wanted to point out, we're, we're going to touch on a few things in category one, which, which is our bailiwick in a moment. But I just wanted to point out, look at regional, enable CPACE. This is the Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy, and it's very interesting. It's already been enabled. And under enabling policy in the middle category there, it's something we might want to be cognizant of promoting more because it's a low-cost, low-term financing for clean energy projects for businesses. And what's interesting is they get assessed on their tax bill equal to the useful life of the improvements, which is usually 20 to 30 years. So the benefit, and the benefit also can pass along to the next owner or even to a renter. So it's something that we might want to consider promoting. So let's go on to the next slide. And everything in green is what's already underway. And you'll note that once it's back up, it doesn't matter. We are the only one who has geothermal on site. So we are unique in that. And we have some other, we have quite a few of those spots filled in for us. I do have a couple of quick questions. We are down for for some categories, and I'm not sure whether the, whether the lobby was insulated. We'd like to fill in that category if that, if there was insulation placed there. And the occupancy sensors, I don't know if we have them in all rooms. I said we did have them. But I note that West Goshen indicates 80%. So perhaps we need to clarify that a little more. But you can see that there are still a few places where we can do a bit more work. I'm curious, when we get to the geothermal, I have a question. Let's go on to the next slide, 13. Two of the items that other townships have begun to work on are something I'd like just to point out to you. We had, we had a survey done, but it's about 10 years old now. So and that is something we might want to consider updating. We also could use a comprehensive plan for all of our buildings and some townships have put together committees that include one or more members from their EAC or SEC, but also additional participants in the community to help develop a comprehensive plan for the whole community. So this is something we might want to be discussing with you in the near future. It'd be nice to have a green building checklist for us as well. Slide 14. I just wanted to show you that quickly. Westchester in their Chestnut Street garage, they have a solar canopy, which is something we've been talking about. Michelle, you'll remember with some of our meetings and David. A solar canopy that helps to power the lights in the garage and the office. And it also is linked in with the, the chargers, the electric chargers on the ground floor in the garage. So while we are not at the moment, we're still just talking about EV chargers because there's some new technology. But we've have been talking about canopy, solar canopies that can be used to help charge. And so we, we're going to be bringing that up a, a little bit later. But I just wanted to show you, that's a picture of a sign that they've put up indicating how much it, it costs to have a solar charged electric car charger. Now, slide, that's, the next slide is us exclusively. That's a picture of our geothermal. We're the only township that has one. Is it my understanding that this is in here in our township building? Is it something that is able to be utilized to help power any of the other buildings? And if not, is it something we can consider expanding so that we can even increase our geothermal capacity? But we're the only ones that have one so far. So.
My understanding is it only powers, it only cools and heats this building.
That's fine.
And that's all it's going to be able to do. It cannot be expanded at this point.
That's fine. Okay. The next slide shows the, this is a picture of the initiatives that West Goshen have taken, and Henry Alexander is on their, their SAC. Is it an EAC or an SEC, Henry? Okay, so we already have, has, has our one vehicle already that's been ordered? Has it already been delivered yet?
No.
Okay, we have one on order and there's.
We've had it, we've had it approved for two years and it's not been ordered. It's supposed to have been ordered for this year, but I don't know that it has yet been ordered.
And I know there's discussion about another. So I think our fleet is not quite as large as West Goshens, but we're working on that for sure. Okay, the reason I'm just briefly touching on 17, the next slide. This shows, everybody is familiar with the, the Crebilly, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, the Crebilly Farm, which is now up for sale. And the only reason I'm showing this is because I'm curious what, any farms, there is, there are persistent rumors that one of the farms in East Goshen may be preparing to be entirely or partially up for sale. I'm just wondering, do we have money in the budget for for any purchases? Open space purchases? And if not, that is something that our committee would be happy to put as recommendation. But it's just something, you know, we don't, we don't need it at the moment, but when it, when, when a property comes for sale, you need to act pretty quickly. So it's important to have open space funds.
Steve, do we have money for that right now?
No.
Okay, so we can bring a recommendation to, I understand the budget and, and Dave, we will have some budget figures for you with our next meeting.
Great.
All right. So the next slide, please.
Christie, sorry, which farm?
It's, I don't want to, oh, that was Crebilly.
I understand.
I don't want to identify because this is, this is just rumor. So I'm just saying any farms that are within any property.
So what would your suggestion be for the budget if you?
That we have some monies just allocated for open space, not for a particular space because there isn't one. But if, when, when a property comes for sale, there will be, you know, extreme interest and we would want to be able to be in the bidding.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. So there was a, I don't know if you're talking about the Miller Farm.
I'm not going to say because.
No, I know, but, but it's public now because they're going to the planning commission tomorrow for initial submission. So
Okay.
You can say. 13, I want to say 12, 13 acres. Well, I have no idea. It's private sale. Eventually.
Yeah.
It's already done though. We're, we're on a completely different scale with credibility than what we're talking about.
We understand, but it's just if you don't have any money in the budget, then you can't be part of a bidding process if something comes up.
Correct.
All right, next slide. I wanted to just show you, um, in, uh, in, in twenty twenty-one, Chester County approved, the commissioners, Chester County Commissioners approved a climate action plan that was several years in the making and involved numerous committees. Jim, uh, was very, um, helpful. Jim's committee is, Jim is also on one of the committees for the county. And there may be parts of it that we want to recommend to you that we might want to be, go on the record, uh, as supporting as well. So that's just something to bear in mind. On the right hand side there, um, I just want to mention benchmarking, uh, and electrical, um, uh, assessment and benchmarking are two things that many townships are now beginning to do. So it is something we're going to be bringing to your attention. And the last slide, that little bottom picture, which isn't easy to look at, uh, the, the countywide progress slide. There you go. That little bottom picture, the, the van is just, um, uh, UPS is ordered ten thousand electric trucks. And we're hoping to see some at least deliver to our area. We certainly get a lot of deliveries here by UPS. That, um, picture on the bottom shows that is in West Whiteland, but it shows a, a company, All Fit Corporation on Creamery Road, they have now installed nine hundred solar panels on their flat roof. So this is something we want to, um, be working on as our committee to recommend a greater awareness amongst our, uh, commercial and business owners of how we might be, um, helpful in, in recommending that they go forward with that. Okay, uh, did you have a few more points you wanted to make? Okay.
So, um, so far Christie and I have talked about, um, the accomplishments that the Westchester Area Clean Energy Future has made over the last two years. This particular slide shows that we have some challenges that we're currently facing. Obviously, we have an uncertain economy and energy pricing that's affecting everything. Inflation rising and fluctuating energy prices hasn't made it been, hasn't made it easy to, to engage our stakeholders. Aggressive and somewhat dishonest sales practices for electricity and residential solar have also been sort of a, um, an adherent to being able to have a conversation with, particularly residents. Because they, um, they've heard or they've know people who've had interactions with dishonest solar vendors or electricity providers. The other challenge that we've had is limited volunteer and municipal staff capacity. We're, we're all volunteers, uh, on this committee and half of the CEF reps have full-time jobs. Getting the attention of businesses, homeowner associations and large institutions is a hard task for us. In terms of municipal communications within the region, overall, we've had some challenges. However, in terms of East Goshen, I have nothing but praise for Jason, uh, for his attention to our requests for communicating postings, uh, on social media and on constant contact. We are recommending, and it's not just, uh, myself tonight with East Goshen, but all of the other reps who are on this committee in the six townships are also planning to give the same presentation to their elected officials. And we're recommending that the Westchester Area Clean Energy Fea- Future should be mentioned or linked on all of our township webpages. Now, we just talked and you approved the Facebook and, and Instagram pages for our ESAC. But it would be helpful also to see the support of the township and elected officials by having that link or mentioning it on, on the township's web, web, webpage. Support from elected officials, uh, we have, we have a lot of support from elected officials, but we're trying to build enthusiasm. We've lost momentum from two thousand and twenty, which is completely understandable given the pandemic, uh, but we really need to refocus our efforts. And the Energy Advisory Group, which was formed at the COG level, um, was dissolved, I think, uh, recently, correct? Okay, they haven't met for a year and a half. So we've sort of lost the ability to have the elected officials in a committee at the COG. So we need to sort of bring that back down to the local level. I'm gonna, uh, next slide, please. I'm gonna pause now on, and just open the floor to the board, uh, on, we welcome your suggestions. We like to, what do you think that the CEF team should be doing differently? What aspects should we amplify? Obviously, this isn't something that is like a test or homework that you need to reply tonight. This is an ongoing engagement. So, um, feel free to let us know at any time.
My understanding is that the Westchester Area Clean Energy Futures Group, you know, does its thing. We have membership overlapping and that's going to feed our ESAC with ideas about what we can do in the township. And it also is a great source of information and resources for people that have questions about what they can do. Uh, one thing that struck me was the review of the ordinances for preparation for, uh, new construction. We made some changes to our ordinance, uh, last year regarding, uh, safety and spacing on roofs and panels and so on. But I don't, as I look through the list on that one slide, um, I don't know that we're, we've been as comprehensive in preparation for new constructions. Um, so I think that that would be something I'd really be interested in. And, you know, working with the planning commission on, on, uh, looking at model ordinances for consideration by the township. And I think that'd be a great role for our, uh, ESAC to, to look at.
You'll have to come up, Christie.
The second thing is, uh, the Delaware Valley.
I, I did check on that and right now our ordinances conform to the state standards. We don't have any additional expanded standards. I was going to mention that, but we're trying to keep this brief. But yes, it is something that we'd like lead, lead, you know, a green, uh, initiatives in the building process. We have much, many fewer, um, commercial properties and construction than some of the other townships in our COG group do, but we, it's still something we should do.
Yeah, thank you. And the second thing, I think, uh, the Delaware Valley Study, um, a couple of years ago identified East Goshen, our Public Works Building as one of the best buildings to optimize solar, uh, panels. And I'd love to see, uh, would Soul Smart do a, um, assessment, cost benefit analysis of that or is there?
We could, we could look into it. We, um, a number of people on the committee have resources in the solar community. And we could, we could find out whether that was.
I think it costs benefit analysis and, you know, how long it would take to, looking at costs, look at grant availability and funding. And then how long it would take to, to pay for itself over.
What's the ROI, the payback?
For the record, when we had the, when we had the, um, expo, um, I actually went to each of the solar vendors and I asked them each to contact Derek and set up, uh, a time that they could come out and evaluate the situation if they were willing to work with a municipality. I think you've gotten zero responses if I'm not mistaken. I asked each of them, I made sure that they had my card. And I've asked, I'd asked each of them to contact me and or Derek. Um, and I've gotten no responses from any of them, unfortunately.
We could follow through. I spoke to the three of them too, Michelle. To, uh, only two of them did commercial properties at the moment of, but, but they were very interested. So we should, thank you. We should recontact them.
And I'm, I'm less interested in having a commercial company look at it and more interested in having a third party independent unbiased, uh, free, uh, resource look at it frankly. Uh, so that's, that's kind of.
The unfortunate thing is, is that oftentimes that, that, that tipping point where it pays for itself is about twenty, twenty-five years. So that's, it depends on how many panels you have and of course, how much it costs at the time, but that's the unfortunate thing with.
The, the commercial, uh, given the, the low, uh, electricity rates that, uh, commercial, uh, businesses pay. Unfortunately, we, we like to look at that and say, well, you know, as a resident, I'm paying, you know, fifteen cents a kilowatt hour when a commercial business might be paying three or four cents a, a, a kilowatt hour.
So, um, I appreciate the fact that you've come out tonight to give us this presentation. Okay, that's fine. Um, yeah, that's fine, but I, I appreciate the presentation and, um, I, I don't have any other, um, comments at this time, except to say that I, I think that linking you to the, um, SAC, ESAC, um, uh, page is probably, and to the township page is something that we would consider. But that's something that we would have to decide on at a future meeting because it wasn't requested tonight, just so you know. So we can't make a motion to that effect. That would be.
We certainly understand.
Just so you know. But, but that's something I would like to consider perhaps at our next meeting, we could maybe do that. So. Does the board have any other questions with Brian right now or?
I'm just interested in what the asks are.
Yep.
Opportunities, excuse me.
So let's go to, thank you very much for the feedback. We'll certainly, uh, we'll do that and follow up on it. So here are some opportunities for elected officials. We'd like to see more elected officials actively promoting the Westchester Area Clean Energy Future. Perhaps coordinating, uh, the creation of a video of a board member introducing one of the East Goshen residents that have already installed geothermal, solar, energy audits, EV chargers, those kinds of things. It would be great to have some contacts of a couple of big hitters, the, the businesses in East Goshen. Uh, we have talking points and resources to point to. It would be great if, uh, we could host, uh, one of the board members might consider hosting a clean energy tour site. The National Solar Energy Society is having their annual tours. The Chester County Clean Energy Group, uh, tour is being held on October first and second. My house is on the tour. It includes both solar, uh, and historical information on energy efficiency, energy audits, remedial work, et cetera, et cetera. We have probably about last year, I would say fifty different individuals within the Westchester, uh, area, including I think one or two businesses. But I would encourage any board member who would like to host a site, um, to do so. And, uh, we would certainly support you in any way that we could, could, could do that. Slide, the next slide. So, um, these are some ideas that were floated at the Council of Government Meeting in July. And these are basically ideas for going to the next, uh, the next, uh, level. Some of the ideas that we, that we were floating was hire professional PR company, uh, Northern Chester County. Was it Phoenixville? Phoenixville has engaged, uh, with Ice Spring Associates for their public relations campaign. And, and really this is, the, the meat of this is really public relations. And then we built the, the website is full of resources. Now we need to sort of like get the word out and that's why we're coming to you to get some feedback on that. There is some idea about buying space on digital billboards in Westchester. One suggestion that we came up with, um, for East Goshen is possibly to post the Westchester Clean Energy Website or notices on the two electronic billboards that we already have on Paley Pike. I mean, that's, that's just an idea. The ESAC could, uh, pursue the cost sharing proposal for EV chargers at multifamily complexes in East Goshen. This is a, an idea that we were trying to come up with in terms of if, if to try to reduce the barrier for adoption for apartment buildings. If we could try to figure out a way to split the cost between Drive PA Forward, the Chester County Government, the township, the multifamily complex owner, the EV owner and possibly sponsors. It could get to the point where the amount of per participant would be low enough to have everybody say, yeah, this is a great idea. And next slide. And that's it. We thank you for.
Thank you.
The ability to breathe.
Thank you very much for coming out.
And we look forward to any suggestions on.
Well, one of the things we can kind of, uh, unless there's an objection of anybody on the board. Once we've had an opportunity to review the, um, website, then perhaps we can have Derek go ahead and just put that up and put that up on our electronic boards. It's not something that requires an emotion or anything, but I think we need a couple of days to at least take a look at the website. But that's something that I think we can make happen pretty easily. We can start with that.
Thank you.
Brian, quick question for you or Christie. One, thanks for coming tonight. And two, I am interested in your proposal for the open space, like budgetary process and things like that. I don't know when you guys are meeting next, but the next three weeks, I think we have meetings for budget stuff. So.
Yeah.
I don't know how quick you guys can do it, but I'm interested in that. So.
Yeah, please, please come to the meetings. Okay, good.
And you meet on the, do, 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 what's the date?
Monday in the month.
September twenty-sixth.
Up twenty-sixth, I see it now. I'll put it on my calendar, see if I can go.
All right. Thanks again for coming out tonight. Uh, moving on to our standing projects. Um, Derek?
We are still working on the Punch List, Madam Chair, on Hershey's Mill Dam Project, but, uh, some fairly good news today. We got to see it in action this morning. So, uh, Mark Miller and I were over pretty early and it held up very nicely. I mean, there was no breaches that we can see. Uh, we got three and a half inches of rain here in East Goshen. So that's a fairly sizable storm. So again, we were able to see it, uh, do its job now that it's, um, kind of completely vegetated and it did, it did well during the storm.
Yeah, I was over there this morning as well. I'll give the Milltown ten update because Derek's tired of saying, we have nothing. But unfortunately, I have nothing. I've reached out to the director again. I'm going above his head tomorrow. So I can only hope for the best.
We should hear by.
There isn't above his head.
We should hear by the end of this month, uh, on the terminations for the Chester County ARPA funds that I applied for.
Great.
To see whether we get a million and a half dollars or.
We're going to say that that was under any other matter. That's fantastic. Anything else under any other matter? Derek, um, do you have? Okay.
So I, I was going to do this under correspondence. I could do it under any other matter. We did have a, uh, correspondence, Madam Chair, on, really courageous act by two of our Public Works employees. And if you bear with me, I, I just want to read it verbatim because I don't, I won't do it justice. And I received this from Grant Everhart from the Goshen Fire Company. So he said, Derek, I wanted to share some feedback from two of the firefighters, EMTs on their staff regarding an ambulance call last week at St. Simon and Jude on West Chester Pike. The call was for a witness cardiac arrest and the school staff initiated CPR immediately. Kevin Miller and Steve Hero, who are on our Public Works Crew, were nearby, heard the call because they have the radios as, as EMS themselves. And took over the CPR and respond, the respondent took over the CPR. Their EMS crew assisted by West Town East Goshen Officers Herman and Lang arrived shortly after. Continuing resuscitation efforts and AED was applied administering a shock which restored pulses and respirations. So on behalf of the fire company, he wanted to extend thanks to Kevin and Steve for immediate response and assistance in delivering, uh, what was a positive outcome for the patient. So that was pretty cool, I thought.
I'd like to see them recognized in a, in another way if we can as well. Um, and I'm going to recognize Steve Hero as a new dad tonight.
Oh, yeah, he did just have a kid.
Daughter's name is Olivia. So, so she was born, uh, yes, absolutely. Uh, is there any other matter from the board? And I'm going to go on to public comment. Are there any comments that the public would like to make here in the room?
Madam Chair, we do have two residents here, Ms. Potts and Ms. Janik from, uh, Walnut Hill Road that would like to make a comment.
Okay. Why don't you come on up? And, um, in the meantime, while you're coming up. Why don't you come on up? And, um, in the meantime, while you're coming up, um, I believe there were some correspondence that, um, a resident would like to have read.
So I, yeah, I, I don't want to say the residence name right now because I want the board to decide what they want to do. Because the board decided last year, they didn't want the correspondence to be attached to the, uh, agenda.
Okay.
This one, uh, individual was requesting that a couple of his emails be shared with the general public on a specific topic. So, um, the board doesn't have to give me an answer right now, but at some point I need to know how to handle that. Um, because we, we got rid of that last year, so. I don't, I don't know which platform, uh, we would use if we would just attach it to the packet again, if that would open us up for, for. So the board can consider that and, and get back to me on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, go ahead, please. Thank you for coming. Say your name.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Nancy Potts and I'm here to represent cider and Old Town Homes. I'm the president of the board currently and we're here to discuss a project that we're working on. I thought I would pass around some pictures that pertain directly to the new project that we are undertaking that supposedly was starting on July 1st or shortly thereafter. Um, if you know cider and all, uh, it's a rather, uh, quaint. Uh, with an, uh, older type infrastructure. Cider Knoll is also a community with a board that treasures being in compliance. We treasure, um, following code. We don't want, especially myself as president, I don't want problems on my watch. So we are a hundred percent behind the code at any type of compliance. Last fall, we had a reserve study done by an engineering firm to identify our areas of greatest need. And they did an excellent job and they prioritized our infrastructure. As a result, the number one item on the list of greatest need was our older retaining walls, which were built in the 1960s at the same time that the entire community was built. And I have pictures of those retaining walls with me right now. So I will pass them around to the board and, um, you can swipe to the left. When we were told that our retaining walls were the number one area of need, we hired a, a consultant, an engineer consultant who came in and I walked the property with him. And he identified as we looked at each wall, uh, prior, at priority list. We began to, um, meet as a board and attack the number one on the priority list. Number one on the product, priority list, as we call it, is the retaining wall at D1, D25, which is in our D building. But on the entire list from our engineers in that reserve study were identified seven units that needed replacement desperately. We prioritize them and the number one unit was, as I said, D1, D25. Uh, we took bids. We accepted a bid and we instructed them that we, they are to comply with all codes and, and they said, no problem. We have a very good relationship with the township. Uh, as a result, as of today, nothing has started. I called the contractor and he said, the holdup was being held up, but the problem was being held up by the township. Then I spoke to the township and they said the problem was that the engineers were holding up the project. So I decided to make a visit. And the day I visited, uh, our person at the township here, his name is Kevin, was not in the office. So I spoke with Dwayne. Dwayne was wonderful. He even explained to me the code regarding fencing and he even pulled out the drawings. And we went over them and that gave me a much greater understanding of the code and the definite reasons for it. I believe codes are for safety, mainly for safety reasons. And we will do whatever we have to do at cider and all to be safe. I just wanted to ask if there's anyone here that could speak to Kevin or Dwayne, um, to see if there's anything that can be done to expedite this process. We have two homeowners, as I said, D1 is one condo and D2 is another condo. They were told to have everything removed off their patio as of July 1st so that the project could begin. One of the persons had to rent a storage unit at additional cost to themselves and they're a very young couple and they don't have that kind of money. So we were, and I, I do continually, continually update them. And I call the contractor every week and say, where are we at? Where are we at now? We're at September 6th and as I said, nothing has happened. I am very sympathetic to the fact that Kevin and Dwayne have a lot on their plate. I am sympathetic to the fact that Dwayne explains to me that they are one man down. So with that in mind, I'm trying to be more and more patient. But I would like to know if anyone here can speak to one of them and see if there's anything we can do. And we're asking nicely to expedite the next step in the process.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Potts.
Yeah, I'm their boss, so I can speak to them. Um, I, I, I would like to get some more information off of you after the meeting, just to so I can clarify. I want to know if it's just a timing issue of, as you say, being shorthanded, which, which we are, but, but we, we still have work to do. Or if there's another holdup, which could be a potentially bigger holdup with engineering or the construction proposal in general. I just don't have enough information yet, but I will get some information off of you and follow up with, uh, Dwayne tomorrow.
Thank you, Derek. Thank you very much.
Please don't go away after the meeting so that.
I will. Thank you so much. And as I said, we've got seven of these walls to do, and this is number one.
Have you already given the contractor deposits?
No. Our first deposit was supposed to be the day they showed up to start the work.
Okay. What are these retaining walls retaining?
Uh, dirt. And does the pictures go around?
Yeah, they did.
So I've spoken to the.
Terrible.
Oh, we're having repoles installed. Absolutely. They're in the drawings that are on Kevin's desk. Okay, so as I'm, as I'm speaking, uh, we're talking about the very first wall that's to be done. The next one, when this one's finished, the next one's to be done, uh, within about six to nine months after the completion of the first wall. So I want to ask since, have you, as you have seen in those pictures, every wall is almost identical. But some of them are better shaped than others for various reasons, including erosion and nature. And they are prioritized. So since they're basically the same, the only difference I would say that is of concern is that the wall we're doing right now, besides being the number one on the priority list, is the tallest. So it's holding back more dirt. The rest of them are within, I'd say, two to six inches lower in height. So they'd be holding back less dirt. So is there some way that in the future, especially if I have Tony or any contractor doing these walls, we would like to have a standard print on file with the East Goshen Township for urgent approval in order to avoid this huge delay in the process.
It's under U C C code, that's, you're going to have to. When you say standard, you mean just have one basically mapped out design for everything and then they could just give the go ahead at any point?
And then variations follow. Yes, exactly. And then variations would follow. Our engineers would send you the idiosyncrasies of the next wall and the next wall.
I mean, each retaining walls has to be, and this isn't us, this is the state, each retaining wall is going to be permitted and checked on specifically and individually. So it, it wouldn't be possible to do that. I mean, the only thing you can say is if you can do them, if they're within a certain timeframe, because if you get a permit and you don't do work within a certain timeframe, I forget what it is in East Goshen actually off the top of my head. I don't know if it's six months or a year. If, if it's one year, then if you don't start within one year, you have to go through the process again. The only thing I would say is if you can, depending on the timing, if you're overlapping some of them, if you can consolidate the permit process by doing more than one at a time, that might make a little bit more sense for you rather than dragging them out one by one. Um, I know money is, you know, obviously a thing, you know, with all.
Right. I wish you could, but we don't have the money.
But we can't just have a standard on and say, okay, this is similar to that one. It's approved. It, it just.
I know that's true. I would suggest, uh, if this is a problem, it sounds like it is, that, uh, you let guys work a little overtime. Saturday overtime.
Yep.
No date has put out a, a control for time, but this would be a situation for.
I, I, I would agree. I, I just, I also want to get a little bit more information of what else is going on as well, so.
Thank you, Derek, and thank you, John.
Thank you.
Is there anything else, Mrs. Potts, that you needed to bring to our attention?
No, there's not. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Appreciate it.
And, and don't go anywhere afterward.
Absolutely. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I brought another representative and I know she'll be pretty brief. She happens to be one of the owners that is directly affected by this wall.
Hi. Please state your name for the record.
Uh, good evening. My, my name's Janina Janik and I am the homeowner of D25. I'm the number one priority of that retaining wall. Uh, Nancy did a great job of explaining what is going on. I don't live on a property. We rented out. The homeowners association takes great pride and care of that community. It's a great asset to this community and she'd like to continue to take care of the whole, um, HOA and all the walkways and everything. Anyway, the reason why I'm here is, um, as Nancy stated, 20, it was built the, the retaining wall where my condo is, 1966, 68. It's older than I am. And I've been to the doctor once or twice, so this needs some care. But not only that, I'm also afraid of the, uh, our renter that lives there. The front, the bay, kind of bay window and the front door and also her bedroom are right by the retaining wall. If that came crashing down, she would get injured very easily. She cannot get in or out of her condo at all. So it's a big, uh, concern for us, um, and also as the homeowners. Why isn't the township doing anything a little more aggressive trying to get these permits, uh, approved? We're concerned.
I, 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 I totally get it. I just can't, without the information of if there's any sort of engineering work that has to be done. If there's something the contractor needs to do on their end, if it simply is just a matter of manpower, I, I have to follow up and see.
Yeah, um, and that's really all, but like I said, my biggest concern is our tenant. If this wall came crashing down, she would, she's stuck there. She literally would be trapped in there.
So let's say this, I think that the, um, we need to look at that situation. If it's a safety concern, then, um, the contractor has something that they have to do, then they should get out there and shore it up with some, some type of, um.
Let me just make a quick comment. This is a homeowners association issue. Um, homeowners association insurance would respond to something like that. It's not, not really the township's issue. But I get that you're, what you're here to say is that there's an urgency and that we would like to move forward with, uh, with the permitting process. We get that. We can meet with Derek. It's a management issue as opposed to a board issue. Um, and, uh, we thank you very much for bringing it to our attention and Derek will be on it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you very much for coming out tonight.
Make sure Derek had your contact information.
Yep. Um, are there any liaison reports, correspondence? Cody?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I second that motion.
And anybody posed? So I'm going to say it's called a question. I, thank you very much.